Oh heavenly Father, come to prayer, thank you Lord for this wonderful day that thou hast given us, Father. Uh, this afternoon, Father, we ask for your presence, Father, as we gather, Lord, to conduct this school board meeting, Father, and let us make the wise decisions, Lord, according to the best interest of the community, Father, and the student and staff. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Mr. Martinez, do we have any public audience? No public audience, okay. At this time, we get an A4 for the Board Minute, Special Board Meeting, November twenty first, twenty twenty five.
Uh, I make a motion to approve Special Board Meeting, November twenty first.
Motion by Martinez.
Second.
Second by Acosta, I'll say hi, I'll again say name, motion passes. At this time, we go to B one District, Mr. Coronel.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the Board, community members. I'm gonna start with the calendars. We're gonna be providing a monthly calendars, so that way you can see all of the different activities that we have district-wide per campus. Um, I believe Marisol left it there for the month of December, then we'll give you one for January and so on throughout the year. Uh, in case you wanna go to the games, in case you wanna visit our school events, you have the calendar there. Last week, I had the opportunity to, uh, start the breakfast with the soup. I was able to meet with, uh, the student council uh, of every campus, and I was able to get feedback, and I wanted for them to give us input as to uh, what is it important for them and in what type of services we can provide, uh, to better our quality of education. Uh, our little ones were very, very honest with the answers. Started talking to them about the music, what type of music they liked, and they told me that it was Junior H and Marca Registrada, they're first graders. You know, some of them like the classical music, uh, soft rock, etc. Uh, but also, uh, they were able to tell me their concerns. Um, at the high school and DTMS, I can tell you that we need to work on the restrooms. Uh, during the break, we're gonna make sure that doors lock, uh, that there are no gaps, uh, so students feel comfortable going into the restrooms. Uh, they also talk about after-school activities, uh, such as creating a gaming club. Uh, and it was very interesting to hear that, a lot of students were like, sir, we, we wanna stay after school and, and play games. Uh, so I'll be meeting with the principals, gathering all that information, and we'll continue with the breakfast with the soup throughout the year, meeting with teachers, custodians, maintenance and transportation, uh, the seniors, I wanna meet with the seniors as well. Uh, and, and I'll keep you posted on that, but it was very, very good. Also, we wanna invite the community, uh, teachers and staff, and also the board members, be part of our Christmas parade. It'll take place on December seventeenth, starting at six o'clock. If you know anyone that wants to participate as part of the parade, uh, please, uh, send them to Marisol. She's creating the list for the parade. Again, we will have the Christmas parade in our community on December seventeenth, starting at six o'clock. I was able to talk to Dr. Tijerina from, uh, Tazby, uh, cause I received some information on trainings, and, and I wanna share this with you. Let me pass it on. Today, we're gonna, we're gonna have the Team of Eight training. However, I know that, uh, the Board has been very interested in, uh, getting leadership trainings, and this one is one that I think is gonna be good for our Board as we continue with our staff development. Uh, it is called a Texas School Board Self-Assessment Tool. The value of this training is a, a thousand five hundred, but Dr. Tijerina likes your superintendent a lot, so he's gonna charge us three hundred dollars once we're ready. It's, it's pretty good. Uh, the information is there. If you have any questions throughout the week, let me know. Uh, once we are done with the Team of Eight training, we're gonna be structuring more trainings for the Board. We will be out for our Christmas holiday, starting December twenty second, all the way to January second. Teachers and staff are coming back on the fifth. We're gonna have staff development the fifth and the sixth, and our students will come back on January seventh. Uh, we will be providing the information to the community through Facebook as well. We are going to apply to, uh, the Electric Bus Grant. In fact, Mr. Hernandez already sent some of the information. We're just waiting for the application to open. Up to now, after our conversation up to now, we have four buses that may qualify. I think they are from, what, two thousand two, two thousand, two thousand three, two thousand four. Uh, so if we get the grant, we're gonna be able to replace those four buses with electric uh, ones. So as soon as the application opens, we'll apply, and I'll keep you posted on that. Also, administration is planning to provide an anonymous staff survey. Um, within the next two weeks, we wanna analyze a culture of the campus and, 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 uh, the district. As soon as we execute this initiative, we'll get the results and, and bring it to you. Uh, the reason why we wanted, we wanted to do it anonymous is we want for the teachers and staff to feel comfortable, and we want for them to be honest about the answers. Uh, again, as soon as we get the results, we'll present it to the Board.
Mr. Coronel.
Yes, ma'am.
On the buses, so we're gonna replace four, how many, uh, regular gas buses would that need? Oh. I was like for the away games and stuff, cause I have an electric car. They take no llegas anymore, no.
We have thirteen.
Oh, perfect. Sir, I'm, uh, Mr. Coronel, I'm the administration, you're gonna do a survey for the whole?
For the whole district, focusing on questions on, on the campus culture and also the district-wide question.
And how are they gonna, is it a technology survey?
It is, it is through, it is through Google. Uh, they'll get the email, they'll just click on it, and, and they'll answer the question. Uh, again, it's gonna be anonymous. We won't know who's answering.
You're not gonna collect?
No, we're not gonna collect email.
And is, is there like, uh, gonna be a deadline?
Yes, yes, we're, we're, we're gonna set up a, a deadline. I'm meeting with the principals this week, just to finalize it, uh, cause I want their input as well, and then we'll send it to, uh, all the employees district-wide.
I think you should provide them in different format, for those that don't speak Spanish and...
That's a very, a very good point. For the custodians, yes, people that are afraid of technology, we'll have that. Thank you very much. That's a good idea. Also, we're in the process of creating, uh, parent and staff committees. Uh, I know that we are going through a transitional period, especially at the high school. We wanna get, uh, the parents involved as well, uh, as to what type of action plans we need district-wide for certain things. Uh, as soon as we get the names of the parents, and also you guys are invited to be part of those committees as well as board members. Uh, I'll let you know, we'll, we'll, we'll create some, and, uh, as we're moving forward with our strategic planning, uh, parents are gonna be, uh, key component of that plan as well. We contacted a construction company, uh, cause as you know, we're planning to have different projects, and this company was part of the last, uh, board training that you guys had. I believe it was in Dallas, right? Was Alice?
Houston.
Houston.
It was Houston. So this was one of the companies that, that was part of that, uh, staff development training. Let me pass it on. Since part of the plan is to remodel the farm, uh, we, we wanted just to see more or less how much it would be, uh, to redo our farm. Uh, we contacted them. They, they said that they're not, uh, working with that type of, of projects. Um, if the Board decides to enclose the gym, then we would contact them as well, cause we're gonna need engineers. But just so you know, we contacted this company, uh, and he was part of that Houston training that, uh, we attended. And also during the Houston training, there was, uh, this company that was providing information on, uh, the LED signs. I think that would be a good idea for the district to have one screen outside with, with our information. Uh, we're gonna get prices, and we're gonna meet with other ones. Again, right now, this is just, uh, a plan phase. If we get the funds, then I'll let you know, but I want you to have the information.
Have we ever quoted on fixing the one that we have on the theater? And then you would assign somebody, right, to keep up with it? Cause like, with that one, it was really never updated.
That one is already, uh, very old, so it, it would cost more to try to fix it, because the, the parts are, are very old. Uh, again, this is just a planning part. As we move forward, this is gonna be something that we'll present to you, in case the Board is interested in adding a sign uh, out there for our community.
Do they offer like insurance?
Yes, they do. Uh, this is just one company. Juan is gonna have a meeting with two other companies, just to see more or less how much it would be, and then we'll bring it, uh, to you.
Will we ever, will we ever put, uh, some for the elementary and the early childhood? I know I would submit, I don't know how many quotes you remember, Mr. Hernandez.
Yes, uh, depending on the cost. So I know you were waiting for this. Let me present it to you. So what I'm about to present to you is a plan to start our projects without having to tap into the fund balance at once. Uh, I think I explained to you last time that, uh, we would, uh, take the route of borrowing money, uh, at a specific APR, and then move forward with the charter bus, and also, uh, the roof, the farm, uh, the auditorium, the enclosed gym. So Juan was able to meet with our financial advisors, so I'm gonna pass it on to him, so he can explain to you the plan.
But the first option that you have there for four hundred, five hundred thousand, for, just for the punitive, uh, bus, a seven-year note. Right now, the average, uh, rates are four point two five. You have, uh, it will be for seven years. You have a payment plan for principal and also, this two point, two point five million is just an estimate, so we can, uh, get some numbers, but at the end, when we actually go out for, for the note, it would be, we'll have an exact amount. I don't think we're gonna need, I mean, though we can always uh, work on that budget, and that will be for fifteen years, also on a four point two five note. Basically, what they do is they go out to banks, they say, okay, the rate right now in the market, you do better. Bank, a bank, long start, they're, you do better than that.
So the fixed rate, can we do, prove it, could we go low?
Yes. Uh, so let, so, yes, that's, uh, illustration provided from the side of the house.
That's why we don't have to tap into the fund balance all at once, we don't, and we don't have to get a bond, which is what we wanna do, so the interest, uh, tax rate won't go up.
I like this option.
Yeah, so, so let's say you decide, we're ready to move, uh, and let's buy the charter bus. We would pay seventy thousand dollars on a yearly basis, instead of just putting the five hundred thousand dollars at one. Uh, this would help manage our fund balance better. Uh, for the other projects, I think last time when we met, we decided that we had certain priorities. The farm was one, then closed gym, uh, the AC at, at the auditorium, um, the roofs as well. So, so we put the two point five million dollars, and we would, uh, invest a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars year one, then a hundred and thirty thousand year two, a hundred and thirty-five thousand year three. So instead of getting the two point five million dollars out of our eight point five million dollars, uh, that we have in the fund balance, that would give us an opportunity to fix our priorities and not tap into the fund balance at once.
I like it.
It'll take about month and a half, two months. If we decide to move forward with this, you let me know. I can present it to you in a formal manner. We'll bring the financial advisors in the January meeting, where we can start forward, uh, we can move forward. Um, as, uh, I presented to you, if we decide to buy the bus, it'll take about ten months to get it. We, we have to order it, they're gonna have to customize it, and then they'll, they'll send it to us. So if, if you feel that we're ready, you can probably bring it to the table in January, so we can move forward. Any questions?
Perfect.
The interest rate is pretty low.
Yes, and, and if you decide to move forward, we'll try to minimize it as much as possible.
I like you do. Any questions?
So it's gonna be two months for the FFA, I mean, decidiendo cómo será el FFA, verdad?
So, so if by January, we say, let's move forward?
I'm just trying to figure out, because I think stock show ends in January, February, and March.
Yes, it, it'll be March.
That's fine, cause by the time, we need to get the money first. So by the time we get the money, the FFA should already be finished.
Yeah, but then if we're, if you're bringing it down, and then we need to put the animals back in there in June, I believe, July, where are we gonna put?
The project, the pro- Yeah, but the, but the project, that, I mean, the FFA project, I, I think it should take at least two months. Too much, right?
You mentioned, the, the farm, yeah, it'll be, it'll be between two or, or three months. Again, cause we have, uh, electrical cords going on, so it's not about just taking it off and putting it. We have to work on the electric lines as well. Uh, once we create a resolution to move forward with, with the money, you can also bring to the table the, uh, actual specs for the farms, or the specs for the, then a timeline. Uh, so that way you, you have a, a, a better perspective. On the enclosed gym, we would have to go out for RFQs, uh, to get an engineer, cause that one, we're gonna need an engineer to get us the specs. Uh, for the farm, we're ready, we're ready, cause the, the electric, electrical lines are there already. It's just a matter of rerouting the cables.
You have questions?
I spoke to one of the board members from La Villa. They have a real nice setup. I'll get to you to post.
Perfect, I'll, I'll go visit over there. Yes, definitely. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Coronel. At this time, we go to item B two. We have Mr. Jacob Howell with the Leadership Training Presentation.
This is something that we've been discussing with the Board, you know, bringing more quality trainings when it comes to leadership, and, and, uh, we have Mr. Jacob Howell here, who will be presenting to you what he has as part of the, uh, Leadership Training. Thank you for being here, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can I, uh, approach the bench?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, honorable school board members of Progresso. It's, uh, great, great to be back. I'm a proud graduate of Progresso High School. Been about thirty years, believe it or not, like it was just yesterday. But it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of amazing things. I kinda keep up on social media, Red App, a lot of positive, great things going on in the community district as well. So with that being said, it sounds like your superintendent is doing a great job as well. This kind of just adds to that. I would like to just start off with, with a question as well. With what if your Board could increase student performance, boost staff engagement, and rebuild community trust, starting today? Now that you're not doing that, but we could always improve, make big improvements. You can position your team, or your ISD organization, to win. We look at the data, uh, or what tells us as far as Harvard Graduate School of Education, Yale Center of Emotional Intelligence. Align school boards, working together, which I see that y'all are doing a great job. You guys have to see yourself as a heads of a school. Think of, of the school district as a organization. Thirty percent higher student performance. Again, look at that. If you can make thirty percent higher student performance, staff engagement increased by forty percent, that's your human capital, community trust, community of Progresso, twenty percent improvement, would you be good for that? Would you position your team to win? I would say yes. These are great qualitative things to do. Qualitative insights, metrics are critical for educational success. I'm a administrator at a neighboring district, certified superintendent, so I know the challenges as well, to, that, as far as education, the hurdles that small districts and districts across the valley are dealing with. I've worked with, uh, Region One, done presentations at your state, regional conferences, uh, Region sixteen as well, Houston ISD, and some of the issues that not only Progresso may or may not be having issues with, but everyone is. For example, the culture, increasing that, that's always a plus. Drop in students, attendants, ADA, yowada. Well, those are just things to look at, but when we're thinking about leadership, that's always a plus. And I have here a Leadership and Cultural Development one, two, three plan. So if you look at number one, is, number one is assess and align. We would review strength, barriers, and opportunities, clarify boards and superintendent roles. And how we would do this, that would help you all as a team build and create a framework that will drive high-impact actions in a structured, measurable approach. And build a culture of trust and accountability. Some of the things that you guys were talking about, I think they're great. This is all for student and district needs. Uh, the number two, strategic organization for optimistic, uh, we would do this with the SPO, with performance optimization. And this is done by apply the win analysis, uh, to identify high-impact actions, uh, to plan midterm initiatives and measurable outcomes, and align decisions with long-term district goals and student success. Y'all were talking about the buses, uh, the signs. All that is, is a mission and a vision that you guys are creating, and that's good. Uh, some of those things, uh, we would talk about it. One of the books that I have is ninety-nine problems, but teaching shouldn't be one. Some of that plan, some of those things that you're talking about are laid out in this book. Uh, with these leadership training, I would simplify, go over it with you in a session or two, uh, or as many times as you guys would like. Uh, again, I've worked, done trainings with Region One, Region sixteen, Houston ISD. Uh, I've worked with the St. Louis Cardinals organization, um, and I know Mr. Alphameter, we had shared some people that, acquaintances, uh, Mr. Ramos, uh, so my background speaks for itself. I'm a, I'm a, like I said, I'm, I'm proud of the school district that Progresso is becoming. Y'all have grown tremendously. And the future that you guys can lay out for the future generation is, is gonna be tremendous. And, and I'm glad to see the, the Board working together, uh, for the community, for the needs of, of the children. And lastly, on these cultural and leadership trainings, we would do, uh, impact and sustain. How we would do this, we would build a unified high-performance, uh, board. We would talk about why it's important to have that, and with some activities, obviously, uh, strengthening governance, culture, and communication, and deliver visible wins that empower staff, students, community, uh, of Progresso. Again, aligned boards are measurable improvements in student performance, staff engagement, and community trust within the first year. So within the first year alone, you will see some of these things. Within a session or two, I couldn't, you, you will get to see what the power and actionable impact you as a Board have. You can position the future of Progresso. Now that you, again, now that you're not doing that, you're doing great things. You could always add on, you could always improve these things. And is there any questions? I made it short and sweet. Uh, I don't know if you guys have ever done a SWOT analysis. I think that would be step one. There's different things that we would do, uh, in some of these trainings. And again, they're hands-on, they're active. I always put myself in a position where how would I like to be trained? We all learn differently, but I'm more of a hands-on guy. Of course, you would get, uh, some information. I'll be there to answer questions. Again, it's hands-on, active approach. I'm, I'm an active guy. And I think, uh, nobody likes to just sit there and just listen. Again, information, ask questions, be involved, and of course, we all wanna see results for the great students and future of Progresso. Dev, any questions?
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? First, Trump, appreciate it, man.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Sure, God bless you. At this time, we're gonna have one, uh, cash disbursements at this time, Mr. Vargas.
For the month of November, total cash disbursements were five hundred and seventy thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars with eleven cents.
We have a question from Mr. Hernandez on your cash disbursements. If you have any questions, so then checks. Please let him know. No. But, alright.
I, I had a question about the spend. They, they did charge four hundred dollars, but what did they do once for the four hundred dollars?
Oh, that was to fix the, uh, gate on the football stadium, on the football stadium, right? It was...
Yeah, it says football stadium.
Yeah. There's two, uh, yeah, there's two, uh, the one next to the home tie, next to the concession stand, and then at the beginning.
Completely, or they just fixed?
They, they, they redo that one.
Alright, okay. Makes sense.
There, there wasn't an accident like a month ago there?
What?
There was an accident that we had to cut up the chain there. Did they fix that?
Yes.
And then for low-man education on the first page, who's getting the low-man education? Is it at the secondary level, or is it at the grade level? Can I be, uh, at the bottom, almost?
Middle school.
It's middle school?
Yes.
And the legal services, six thousand and seventeen thousand? That's like for how many months, or is it a
October, September and October. Well, October and September. October is the six thousand, and September is the...
So every time we call the attorney, we get charged.
No.
So this is for September and October, right?
Yeah. Okay.
I'm good.
No, I think we had just mentioned last time, like for all the turf payments, would you be able to just give us, um, that, that list? Cause I know I see, we see them in all of these, but like to put them all together, cause I already lost track of how many.
For, for all the, what, I'm sorry?
The turf, the payments for the turf contract.
Okay. You want listing of the payments?
Sí, nada más.
So what we pay? Need to?
I don't know, I'm like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, remember, cause it was postponed.
So we had to paint the, we had to pay the, what was it?
It was not approved, remember, it was approved one first, the second one we approved, the retained it.
And this is just showing that we already made the check.
Correct.
Juan, damn it, with the trouble site, your friend?
No.
And they're gonna do like, uh, they're gonna do like a program, they have to apply for like a grant or something. This Friday morning class, like when they outsource or outsource this, like the meal planning.
Okay.
You know what I'm talking about? And it was due this Friday, and they were looking at the cost comparison, so I thought, I was thinking, great. And I think if we go with them, it's only two fifty, and we get reimbursed four fifty, we'll be making money out of it. But they handle, cause they get like a better price for everything.
But they handle, cause they get like a better price for everything, you need to look into it, I think it's too late for this here, but for me, and they actually plan your meals, and like, the menu is locked.
There's no extension?
No, there are no.
No extension?
But I mean.
I'll give him a call in.
Yeah, it's a thing, right now, we get reimbursed, but then, I was burning, and then if we go with this company, it's like four fifty, and. It's, it's a way of like how much we get reimbursed at the date and what else we're actually spending, and at the end of the day, we get reimbursed, we have extended. So. How close?
Any other, any other question with the cash disbursements? Alright, at this time, we're gonna investment report, Mr. Hernandez?
Total investment for, current earnings for the month is thirty thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which brings the total investment to nine points. Alright, those require.
No questions?
I make a motion to approve the investment report.
Motion B by Mrs. Martinez, second by Mrs. Costal, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm looking at your name, motion passed, at this time, we have the tax collection report.
Total collection today is sixty-nine thousand five seventy-four, a total levy is four point five, four point five million. Compared to last year, we, last year, we collected ten points, if I, as of right now, and right now, we're collecting nine points.
So we're doing good, this is. That one, that one.
It requires board approval.
I make a motion to approve the tax selection.
Motion by Mrs. Martinez, second by Mrs. Costal, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, at this time, do we have a budget update?
Yes, sir, total but, revenues received as of today is six point three million, total expenditures four point million, and encumbrances one point five.
Any question on the budget update, Mr. Hernandez? Appreciate it, Mr. Hernandez, go to G one, for the record, Mr. Martinez is here. At this time, we have G one, do we, we go with the school board, team of eight train? Are we just, we just, you wanna go to executive?
You wanna do executive?
Alright, let's do that, alright, ladies and gentlemen, six thirty-two, and we go to executive session.